So I just want to thank the city council members for recognizing that the arts are a very important part of our city and community. Thank you so much, and I hope that you have the opportunity to attend some of the art events that are happening. I think they're listed on the website, on Facebook, and as Luke has found, there's art drops happening all week. And so for all of, anyone else, please join in on the festivities. Thank you.
So a special thanks goes out to our Meridian Arts Commission. Among all of the groups listed, they have done a wonderful job, working extremely hard, trying to promote the arts and arts opportunities in our community. So thank you, Gretchen, and to the whole commission. Appreciate all that you do. Item number seven, future meeting topics, public forum. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, Carolyn Vaught is here, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
You are.
Hi Carolyn, come on forward. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me. So, do you want me to just tell you what I'm looking to do?
Sure.
I'm a real estate agent, representing a seller on, located at 1370 West Lake Hazel Road. And in several discussions, we've tried to figure out how to get this property sold. She's tried to sell it two other times, and in communications with Planning and Development here, I was told that that property is eventually going to be annexed into the city of Kuna. So I've been speaking with Kuna, and they have it pegged for commercial land, which is probably why she couldn't sell it as high-density. So Kuna asked me to get a letter from the city of Meridian stating that they would approve the idea of annexing into Kuna, because Kuna is ready for her to go ahead and make that change. And there are two other neighbors that are also just on that side of Lake Hazel. So the north side of Lake Hazel is still Meridian, the south side is Kuna. It's my understanding, the eventual plan is that Kuna will go up to Amity. The biggest challenge for the sellers is that they can't get utilities to the property from Meridian, but for Kuna, it's directly across the road. So it makes sense for them to be able to make that move. She's elderly and really needs to sell, and it's been really difficult because of the zoning and obvious, for obvious reasons, she can't get the utilities to the property. And it's in the future plan. So that's the goal tonight, is to just get a letter stating that Meridian would consider this okay for Alice to make her move, and annex into the city, so we could start the application.
So the part of the process, Carolyn, for the public forum, generally, we don't, we gather information in requests.
Sure.
We can't make decisions, obviously, make, take action at these, but we can gather the information and provide some direction to you and perhaps to our staff. One of the general principles that's utilized in whether or not an annexation should cross an area of impact line usually turns back to, we would look to our staff, Development Services, Public Works, to provide us some direction on
Okay.
what the unintended consequences might be of something like that. It's really, you know, property-specific, so that's probably where we would steer you next.
To go back to Planning and Development.
Correct, for the city of Meridian and our Public Works, and that might
So they sent me here, so is there an application that I need to file to get this started? So I just need to know
Sure.
what's my next step to get that done?
The application would be an application with the city of Kuna.
Yeah.
Not with the city of Meridian. But there would be requests for us to provide input and direction as to whether we object to it or have any concerns with it. Mr. Nerry, you can help me if I'm summarizing this correctly, but that's one of the things that might steer whether we have a concern, if it's something's within our area of impact, we planned for it, made investment decisions in
I understand.
infrastructure. It's usually why we try to get that feedback first.
I don't remember who I talked to, I've got a note, but I don't have his name here. But he did tell me to contact by email the city council and schedule time to come in. So I emailed Chris, is who I've been working with. And so he scheduled me, so if this is the wrong way to go about it, I appreciate your help, and just point me in the right direction, and I'll get it going.
So, Mr. President, if I can, just clarify the process a little bit. So this is the right forum. What we've agreed to with Kuna is that before they'll accept an application, if it's in our area of impact, which this property is, they have agreed not to accept her processes' applications for annex into their city and another city's area of impact without the letter that she's asking for this evening. So this is in our area of impact, I haven't talked with Public Works about this, but it is in our planning area and our service area, and I understand the situation, that the potential seller's trying to get out of this property, but we have master plans showing our utilities going through this property, and if this goes to Kuna, we've got to redo a lot of plans. And I'm not trying to speak for Public Works, but this is, there's some real implications long-term to the city of Meridian if we were to let this property go. So again, we haven't fully analyzed this, I just, I'm looking at the property for the first time. But just to clarify, city of Kuna would not accept the application to annex, even though by state code it's eligible, because we have this verbal agreement with them recognizing each other's area of city impact.
So, Mr. President, Mr. President, members of the council, so I think the most appropriate at this juncture is, because we cannot have a fully vetted conversation about this, since it's just a public forum, is to set this off for a week or two, whatever Planning and Public Works need to at least come back to this council to give their opinion on what their recommendation to you would be, on whether or not we would, at least the staff would recommend providing the letter they're requesting. And then that way, because the only other option I could think of would be actually to apply to amend our area of impact, which is more problematic, I think, for an individual property owner. So I think that would be the most logical, is to have Planning and have Public Works provide you with at least their opinion as to whether or not this request would be in the best interest of the city and they would support it, or whether they would recommend the city not support it.
Mr. Nerry, would that be an action item we put on in a couple of weeks to decide whether or not to issue that letter?
Yes, I would suggest that, Mr. President, to do that.
So what would my follow-up be with you? I guess that's my question, is what should I
Yeah, Mr. Hood provided some direction. I think you're going to be talking with our Public Works and Development Services.
Okay.
Answer whatever questions they may have to understand what property this is, and take a look at how we might have planned for it and invested to serve that area, so they can make their recommendation to us as to whether or not that letter should be issued.
Okay. So I will hear from you, or I should contact you back?
I would probably talk to them sooner rather than later.
Okay, perfect. Talk to Bill Parsons, okay? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, just for council's benefit, I coordinated Ms. Vaught's speaking tonight. I wasn't the initial point of contact in Community Development. She worked with them to get direction to contact me to schedule, so just wanted to clarify.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I think I must work.
Thank you for bringing up the issue, though, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate it. No matter where we end up, I just need to know what to do.
Sure.
You know, honestly, this lady needs some help. She needs to move.
Right. Appreciate you bringing it up. Mr. Clerk, anyone else sign up?
No additional sign-ups.
Okay. That moves us to item eight, our action items. Item 8A will open our public hearing for H-2019, H-2019-0082 by the Land Group. Sonia, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for a development agreement modification. This site consists of 3.29 acres of land, it's owned CG, and is located at the southwest corner of North Eagle Road and East Eustick Road. This property, along with the abutting 11.39 acres of land, was annexed into the city in 2008, and a development agreement was approved that incorporated the entire annexation area, which totaled 15.33 acres of land. The abutting property recently entered into its own development agreement, that was under the name of Villasport, leaving only this property subject to the existing development agreement. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is mixed-use regional. The applicant is proposing to enter into a new development agreement solely for the subject property, thus terminating the original development agreement, because most of the original DA provisions are no longer applicable to development of this site. The terms of the existing development agreement are included in the staff report, and the conceptual development plan previously approved for this site is as shown there on the right. The existing concept plan depicts two retail commercial structures with associated parking. The shared access with the property to the south via Eagle Road, as shown on the plan, was denied. The proposed concept plan depicts three pad sites, one multi-tenant shops pad with a drive-through and shared parking. The maximum overall building area proposed is 25,900 square feet, and that is conceptual. It could change, change a little bit, a little wiggle room on that. A concept building elevation was submitted as shown that demonstrates the quality of design proposed for future buildings in the development. Access to the development is proposed via a shared driveway from East Eustick Road, recently approved with the Villasport project along the west boundary of the site, and a cross-access easement via North Centerpoint Way, North Cajun Lane, and East Seville Lane. No public streets are proposed within the development. Staff is recommending a cross-access ingress/egress easement, in accord with 11383 of the Unified Development Code, is provided to the adjacent properties to the west and south as a provision of the development agreement. Written testimony was received from Tamara Thompson, the applicant from the Land Group. She is in agreement with the staff report, and staff is recommending approval. Staff will stand for any questions.
Sonia, council, any questions? Seeing none, the applicant like to come forward?
Mr. President, members of council, my name's Tamara Thompson, I'm with the Land Group, 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. As staff mentioned, we did send in an email today, an agreement of the staff report. I have a PowerPoint if you want to see it, a lot of it has what Sonia has here, so I think maybe I can just go over, do I have, you can see my thing? So we left, since the original development agreement, this property was actually annexed in '03, and then it's been through a couple different revisions of modifications to development agreements. And with the Villasport and this pad on Eagle Road recently being approved, this has a separate ownership entity on it, and the previous development agreement just doesn't make sense anymore for this one. So we're proposing a new development agreement for this one, and we have read the staff report and are in our agreement with staff's recommendation for the provisions of the new development agreement. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Okay, thanks Tamara. Council, any questions of the applicant? Does not look like there are any. Thank you. This is a public hearing, Mr. Clerk, anybody sign up?
Mr. President, no one's signed in for this topic.
Okay. Anyone here in the room who hasn't signed up, who wishes to provide any testimony, input, comment, questions? Seeing none. Council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton?
I move that we close the public hearing for H-2019-0082.
So moved and seconded to close item 8A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. It's the council's pleasure.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton?
I move that we approve application H-2019-0082 as presented earlier.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8A, H-2019-0082. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President, council member Mylum?
Aye.
Council member Burton?
Aye.
Council member Palmer?
Aye.
Council member Little Roberts?
Aye.
Council member Cavanagh?
Aye.
Council member Borton?
Aye.
Thank you, item number 8B, is a public hearing, H-2019-0066, WH Specific. Kevin, good evening. Thanks for joining us. We'll begin this application in public hearing with staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. This is the Millbury subdivision application before you, an annexation and preliminary plat. The site consists of 8.79 acres of land, currently zoned RUT, located at the northwest corner of West Cherry Lane and North Black Cat Road. The current comprehensive plan future land use map designation is light-density residential. The applicant today is requesting annexation and zoning of 8.79 acres of land with an R8 zoning district, and a preliminary plat consisting of 41 single-family residential building lots, and five common lots for detached homes at a gross density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre. This 4.7 is slightly higher than the three dwellings per acre standard associated with low-density residential future land use map designation this property currently has. The applicant is requesting a step up in density to a medium-dense residential designation. The comprehensive plan does allow for step ups in density, and the applicant's request meets their required criteria. In addition, though the ongoing, through the ongoing comprehensive plan update, this property is designated to be changed to a medium-dense residential designation with the current draft of the new plan. So you can see those, the current future land use map there and the draft future land use map up on your screen. Since the applicant's request is in line with the potential future change, and the density fits with the surrounding uses, staff is comfortable with the applicant's step-up request. So currently, this property has two single-family homes and a number of accessory structures on it. The applicant is proposing to remove one of the homes and the accessory structures, and then relocate the other to fit on a new lot within the subdivision over on the western edge of this property. Staff has reviewed the new location of this home, and it is in compliance with the requested R8 standards. In response to conditions listed in the staff report, the applicant has provided a revised open space calculation, showing 11.9% open space, which does exceed the 10% required by code. Amenities in the subdivision include a children's play structure in this middle common area here, multi-use pathways along both Black Cat and Cherry Lane, as well as a picnic shelter and seating areas in this middle common area. The applicant has also submitted conceptual elevations, shown here. So the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval. In that public hearing, we heard from Jane Suggs, who is the applicant's representative in favor, as well as a Michael Pearson, who is a representative of the church directly to the north of the property. There is known indirect opposition, but William McEwen, who is a property owner directly to the west, did provide both commenting and written testimony, bringing up concerns about increased traffic at the intersection of Black Cat Road and Cherry Lane, potential for the developer and ACHD to possibly work together on improvements. And Mr. McEwen was also concerned over the lack of communication from the applicant in regards to how the property would develop, and potential stub streets to his property. The issues of discussion by the commission included the timing of improvements to nearby roads, and if there was any potential for ACHD and the applicant to enter into some sort of cooperative development agreement. They also discussed concern over the requested step-up in density from light-density residential to medium-density residential. The potential for fencing around the open irrigation pond located in this north lot here. Also discussed was how access would function off of North Black Cat Road, and then the future connectivity between the proposed stub street and the existing stub street in the Burlingame subdivision, which is to the west of this property, going through Mr. McEwen's property. Commission had two changes to staff recommendations. The first was to add a condition that the applicant work with staff to include safety measures around the irrigation pond. This discussion has taken place with the applicant, and they have proposed a four-foot vinyl fence around the pond, which matches the existing fencing proposed with the subdivision. The other change for staff recommendations from the commission was that the applicant work with the property owner to the west, Mr. McEwen, to discuss the location of the stub street to his property. This has happened as well, which has resulted in these changes that you see before you between the original preliminary plat and a revised preliminary plat. So there's two outstanding issues for council right now. The first is the council approval for the requested step-up in the future land use map designation from light-density residential to medium-dense residential. And then the, basically because of this change to the plat here, that the applicant has brought before us as a result of the discussions with the property owner to the west, there's three items that need to be basically cleaned up in the staff report. It's these three issues here. We need to replace a reference to block two with block one, and then staff would like a revised landscape plan to match the revised plat, and also incorporate some revised conditions of approval from ACHD. And since the commission hearing, staff has received some basic written testimony from correspondence between the applicant and Mr. McEwen, who is the property owner to the west, regarding the relocation of the stub street to his property. Based on that correspondence, it looks like they are in agreement. With that, staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions of staff?
Mr. President.
Cavanagh.
Just one quick one, Kevin, just for sure that I'm remembering things right. If I recall, council's kind of said we're not real excited about entertaining step-ups until the comp plan's finished. My assumption is because the belief is that council will adopt the change in the map, that's why this was able to kind of move forward? Help me understand that piece.
Council member Cavanagh, that's part of it. To give some more context as well, the property to the west, there's a subdivision here called Burlingame. They also requested a step-up, I don't know, it was probably at least six months or so before this, and that step-up was granted, so there's a little more context in the area. But yeah, that was another piece of the puzzle, too.
Any other questions of staff? The applicant like to come forward? Good evening, Jane.
Hello there. Good evening, city council, President Borton. Can you change over to the, there you go. I'm Jane Suggs, I work at WH Specific, 2141 Airport Way. I'm here representing Millbury subdivision and Trilogy Development. And Kevin did a pretty good job of explaining what we went through at P&amp;Z, which was a pretty nice hearing. We had quite a few people show up to listen in. I just wanted to say that even though we're annexing into Meridian, this kind of feels like an infill project, since we're almost completely surrounded already by properties that are within the city of Meridian, so it almost feels like infill. Let's see. Here's a map showing that area in blue, you can see, and you just saw this with Kevin. The properties to the north and south are in the city limits and have an LO zone, and the property just to our west, he talked about Burlingame, beyond Mr. McEwen's property, that was recently approved, the Burlingame subdivision with an R8 zone. Here's a copy of our old landscape plan. This will be changed prior to final plat to reflect the change in the plat that shows that north street, North Birch Drive, will end, and there will be a street between North Birch and Quaker Ridge. Both staff and the P&amp;Z approved the step-up in the comp plan, and we appreciate that because of these particular circumstances. We think that that's really appropriate, to have the medium-density at what we call a hard corner, and this is a corner that's on the corner of two arterial streets, with only one access allowed by ACHD on Black Cat Road. Our plan is for 40 new homes and one relocated home on 8.79 acres with a density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre. We are providing 11% of usable open space, and that actually does not include the landscaped area around the irrigation pond. It won't take up that whole area, so we'll have some landscaping around that, we will put a fence around that to keep the little kiddos out, we even show a bench along the street there, so it can kind of be, I consider it sort of an amenity, but it's not included in your qualified open space calculations. So if you included that and the pathways, and we even have a little emergency access down there on the south side that will actually serve as a pedestrian path, so we have quite a bit of open space there. As Kevin suggested or explained, we will have a totlot playground in that center space and a picnic shelter. Here is a copy of the revised plat. We did email quite often with Mr. McEwen. He had suggested a different, just a little bit different location for the sub-street that goes to the west, but we had to adjust it down a little bit because we have to meet offsets. So, you know, between local streets on another local street, there needs to be an offset. So when you're coming out of one, you're not kind of just south of another street, because it creates confusion. So we did put that at the location that's approved by ACHD. We do agree with all the conditions of approval, and respectfully request you approve our annexation rezone and preliminary plat, and all the conditions of approval, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Jane. Council, any questions of the applicant? Not yet. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, any sign-ups?
Mr. President, one sign-up, Mr. McEwen has signed in.
Hello, my name is William McEwen, I'm at 5120 West Cherry Lane. I think I've been mentioned a few times.
Kevin, can you flip that back to the planning and zoning thing? Keep going. Couple more. It was the one with, it was the one with Breyer? That's, yeah, the one right before that.
Mr. McEwen?
Yeah.
Oh, you've got to come forward to the mic as you're talking.
I'm sorry, the one right before that. Oh!
You might be on the monitor.
It was a blow-up of the one on the left. That's all right, leave it where it was, kind of get the message across.
Mr. McEwen, is the monitor right in front of you working, or is it not working?
Oh. Whoops, now what happened? I don't know, we didn't want that either. Yeah, we'll just go with this. The zoning map, so I just wanted to point out that it isn't built yet, but we've got Burlingame over there. Down south, I see that they're applying for, I don't know why that keeps moving, excuse me, just south, there is, I believe it's a church, and they're applying for R8 as well. Which, great, I mean, I love to see this town grow, I'd like to see it grow properly. And I'm not going to stand here and tell you what to do or how to vote, but I'm sure you're very capable of doing that yourselves. I do feel it is important that I point out a few facts regarding this project. I'm sure that you've read the report submitted by ACHD, it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight. This report is extremely, I believe it's extremely misleading and incomplete. I have made available the email chain between myself and Yorgay Zambrano, I hope I pronounced that right, the author of the report, confirming the following. There's a variance, not mentioned in the report, that was given because the entrance of the subdivision is more than 100 feet too close to the intersection. Okay, fine. The work on Black Cat and the corresponding intersection is not scheduled within the next five-year plan, and according to Ryan Head, the head of planner of ACHD, there will be no plans for the next 10 years. So that subdivision that now has medium-density all the way around it is not going to get improved, as it stands, okay? And this just isn't, this isn't an issue just with this particular project, but it's an issue when you add all three of them together. The traffic count used for capacity is based on a study done over a year ago and does not account for the subdivision approved by this council last year for 74 ounces, as well as the 41 proposed this project. This is adding additional housing into the calculations, the intersection would become overcapacity. And I have put that information on the website as well. Or And I have put that information on the website as well, or in the area. During the planning meeting, I asked, I requested a left-hand turn lane due to aforementioned facts. So why am I concerned about this? I don't live over there. According to the studies done by the Federal Highway Administration, left turn lanes increase approach capability by 25%. You're already cutting 100 feet off of where that ingress egress is supposed to come from in regard to the intersection. Has me a little bit worried. And the Federal Highway Administration has found crashes can be expected to decrease up to 44% after installing the left turn lane. Ryan Head is willing to entertain a developer cooperative, which will allow the necessary road improvements to be done and paid for out of future assessments that the developers in the area will be paying at the time of development, which means there will be no additional cost to the developer. None. By acquiring, is this thing still working? By acquiring a left turn lane, the council will assuredly prevent traffic accidents and probably save lives. So it's up to you to decide what you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Council, any questions?
Mr. McEwen? Mr. President?
Yes.
You're short on time, and you were, you probably expedited your explanation quicker than you would have liked. So just in summary, what are you asking of us?
I would like to see, I would like to see the developer go to ACHD and talk to them and see if they can't get their funds routed as a left turn for a left turn lane in and out of the ingress egress of that property. So they've got about 150 feet of turn lane right now, which is a little skimpy. If they were to continue that turn lane on and past to at least the church parking lot entrance and exit, it would allow people to turn left out of that place and allow the people to turn left and then turn into that place without blocking traffic back and forth. And they wouldn't be doing a 060 to try and get into the left lane heading north out of that property. It's just a safe, good thing to do, and it's going to be awfully hard to develop and increase the capacity of that intersection right there after the subdivision goes in. It's a safety issue. It doesn't affect me. I never drive over there, but it does concern me quite a bit, and it's easily fixable.
Any other follow-up questions? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Any other signups?
No additional signups.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to provide testimony and comment on this application? Would the applicant like to come forward and make some final remarks and perhaps answer and address some of the concerns Mr. McEwen had raised and maybe the opportunity with ACHD?
Yeah, thank you very much, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak with you again. Jane Suggs, representing the Millbrae subdivision. The only thing I can provide at this point is that there is a plan for the intersection of Black Cat Road and Cherry Lane. It's listed in the CIP. It will be wide to five lanes on the north leg, 2021 to 2025, and that time shade is... It's actually pretty high in the CIP. There are about 137 projects listed. This is like number 13, so it's pretty high on their CIP list of projects. It's not in the five-year work plan, which they're currently working on, but it is in the future plan. We are dedicating right-of-way, so there will be room for a turn lane if ACHD determines that that is necessary. This is a fairly small subdivision with 41 lots. Of course, we'd be happy to talk to ACHD. The location of the entrance is actually really the only thing that they would allow us to do. We can't get closer. We can hardly get further away without putting a road right on the property boundary, which is not what people like to see. So this is an approved access and the only access that's allowable off of Black Cat Road into the subdivision, and that's why we have an emergency access on the south side that also serves as a pathway. Eventually, with that stub street and with Burlingame and Mr. McEwen, with some plan to develop his property, he said in the future, he, we will have a connection between those two. So there will be a stub street on both sides of his property that can easily meet up for his development when he, when that occurs. Again, we have a staff report from ACHD. That little waiver was the only thing that we had to, and that was a staff level waiver. We didn't have to go to the commission for that because it was a minor waiver just because of the circumstance of the location of the entrance. I don't really have a whole lot to add, other than, you know, if you require us to go talk to ACHD, we will, we will be paying impact fees, of course. All of these subdivisions will be paying impact fees to ACHD to actually build those improvements. And I can stand for other questions if you have them.
Thank you, Jane.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cabinet.
Jane, I appreciate your earlier comments, kind of referencing this as almost as an infill. I tend to kind of see it that way, too. The questions, though, are first, I guess, around why the desire for the step up intensity? That's a piece that I'm really struggling to wrap my head around as to the why behind that. Help me understand why that's necessary.
Like I said before, it's a hard corner. It's really not the location for larger lots because of how busy that intersection really is. We typically, in those intersections, and many times we see commercial uses because of the access. But again, one access off of one road doesn't lend itself, unfortunately, to a commercial opportunities. We see that all over the, actually, all over the city. I think I told P&amp;Z, too, I'm working on a piece of property right on State Street that only has one access that's far removed from the next location street, and it's just impossible to get that marketed to some kind of commercial use. Again, I think with Burlingame being approved with an R8, the same size lots, and the LO around us, this is the perfect opportunity to get some needed housing into Meridian and also a very good mix. We have some smaller lots you'll see in the plat. We have a few smaller lots in the middle that are internal to the site. The other lots are located around the perimeter of the site. So, and we did talk to the staff that are working on the comprehensive plan, and they did share with us that that was their intention, is that whole area would be reload or redesignated in the new comprehensive plan as medium density. The alternative, which we would prefer you not do, is to defer this until that plan's approved, but it would just seem to be kind of not necessary as we move forward in this process to have this step up to medium density. We are just a little bit below the, I think it's three to eight whenever you're doing medium density. We're at 4.7, so we're kind of at the lower end of that scale and matching most of the area around it. Is there anything I can add that would convince you?
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Other questions? So I've got one for you, Jane. If I heard it right, the approval for the access to Black Cat, that is much closer to the intersection than normal district policy. Is that right?
Yes, it's closer than normal district policy, but given the location of the property and the distance we have to actually work with, that was the location that they could approve on a staff level. It wasn't a big change, so it didn't have to go to the commission. Otherwise, there would be no way to access the property, which is basically they can't do. So they actually are no access on Cherry Lane to the property, no street access, only one street access to Black Cat.
And is that, to some degree, that's a byproduct of the sequence at which the annexation is requested? If the property to the west, you know, between Burlingame and this one were developed, that would change your options.
Well, we've provided that stub street, so we'll always have that option. That option will be there. Again, I don't know. We haven't seen a development plan from Mr. McEwen. At the P&amp;Z, he mentioned he wanted to put a Montessori school in the back of his property or somewhere on his property, so I'm not sure if it will be a subdivision with lots and that will be one of the lots or not. It would be a shame to hold off on, have all the properties developed around it and waiting for one connection. In fact, people will want to get to Black Cat. And of course, if you look across the street, we also have to offset a little bit from this where you look at these maps from Mill Iron. So again, you don't, you've got to have the right offset from the streets across the street.
Certainly. So in addition to the step up concerns that Councilman Cabinet raised, you know, that's one of them. That seems to be part of the discussion if, your hands might be tied somewhat with necessitating Black Cat access so close to the intersection.
Well, if there was a step up, if you did get the step up, you'd still have houses there. You would have the same layout. You would still have the same access.
Right.
Low density doesn't mean you don't need an access off of Black Cat, so.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I wasn't tying them necessarily together.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying that was sort of...
Independent concerns.
Okay.
There was a step up concern, but independent of that, there is the concern over the location of this access to Black Cat, which if an exception to district policy were, was granted, there still has that safety concern that was raised, and it sounds like Mr. McEwen's suggesting to have a requirement of the developer and ACHD get this done now. You've indicated you will meet with ACHD. I don't, I don't know what that actually means.
I don't either, because I don't think the developer can make ACHD go do something on a piece of property for a potential safety, a potential safety concern based on the location of a street. No matter, I mean, none of the other, the church has gone in. There's no left turn lane there. The other properties have gone in just north of us. There's no left turn lanes to get into the property. So, I mean, I can appreciate the concern, but I don't think there's anything I can do to make ACHD go put in a turn lane. There's, we will, we have right-of-way. If it becomes a safety issue, for sure, that's when ACHD would analyze that area and could possibly use impact fees for our property and all the other properties that are in that infill area to do something. I think that's how the process works. I don't think there's a way for us with 40 lots to go or get, force ACHD to do anything. Unless you know.
Well, as a follow-up to your comment of willing to meet with ACHD.
Yeah, we can, we can meet with them. I just don't know that, you know, I don't, I'm not understanding, I've been doing this for many years. I haven't been able to force ACHD to go put in a turn lane for a potential problem.
So, and that prompted the question of, if there's no solution at all, the comment of, we meet with ACHD implied as though it could lead to some solution, and if there's no solution, then it makes much sense.
Maybe they have one, but...
So is it, is it, I'm just sorry, I hate to belabor the point, but is it your perspective that as to that access and safety issue, that there isn't a concern for safety as we might be led to believe, or there is a concern, but you don't have the mechanism to try to address it because properties developed to the north and Mill Iron and other off-site characteristics?
Actually, I have to say that at our analysis, we don't believe that there's a safety issue. We believe that that's something, again, other properties around there haven't had an issue with that. I don't think, I haven't done, or the staff report from ACHD did not indicate safety issues there, nor traffic, nor traffic accident concerns. I think they do some analysis there, so. I don't particularly see it as a safety issue, but if you want me to go talk to ACHD, I will. I'm just, I'm agreeable to those things, just like P&amp;Z asked us to make, work with Mr. McEwen to change the location of the stub street, which we were very happy to do.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Burke.
I think I would be open to the idea of you speaking with ACHD. I think sometimes it's policy in this valley to put the cart before the horse when it comes to roads. I understand Mr. McEwen's concern. Wouldn't hurt to just sit down with ACHD to see if you can work out something with them to make sure, just to verify that that intersection using, you know, numbers, you know, that include the Burlingame subdivision as well makes sense, and if there's anything we can do to just ensure that there's, you know, pedestrians or automobiles are safe.
Sure. I would be happy to sit with them if you can make that a condition of approval that I meet with them and respond to staff about the results of that meeting with maybe a huge expectation that something big is going to happen, but I would be happy to do that. I mean, again, I'm not closed to that idea at all. If there's a solution that we can accommodate a potential safety issue, then I'd be more than happy to talk to ACHD about it. I mean, we did that, again, like I said, with the staff. P&amp;Z asked us to meet, work with Mr. McEwen, and we responded and kept Kevin informed of all of our back and forth on that. As far as Burlingame goes, their access is actually off of Cherry Lane, so will not be impacted by a turn lane necessarily on Black Cat. And I don't think that there was, again, we have right-of-way available should there be the need for some additional paving.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Palmer.
I move to close the public hearing on item 8B.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on item 8B. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Mr. President?
Mr. Palmer.
I appreciate you being nice about it, but we, I mean, we all know if you were to go to ACHD, they'd be like, why are you here? So, I mean, we can, to make ourselves all feel good, have conversations all day long, but at the end of the day, we need to conduct some business and get something done. So with that, I move that we approve H.2019-0066 as proposed and including the modifications to the provisions that are outlined under the outstanding issues for City Council.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8B. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Cabinet.
I won't be voting in the affirmative for a couple of reasons. Want to appreciate, again, this is a challenging piece of property. I get that. I don't support the step up. Even, honestly, if a comp plan comes back and this is zone, medium density, that doesn't mean that I suddenly also support, you know, an annexation that comes six months later. We've got a lot of people that were cramming over in that part of town. We've got schools that are full. You're going to come with a step up in density, I expect a developer to come be creative. I'm going to take a quote from Councilmember Mylon that talks about minimum. This just looks like a minimum application to us. Barely exceed open space. I don't see a lot of rich character in these homes. I just, I fail to see the benefit of our community for this application, so I'm not supportive of it. I don't think it's the right fit and the right piece of property for Meridian.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Burke.
Thank you, President Borden. I feel the same way in regard to this application as Councilmember Cabinet does. I have some concerns. I don't know what the level is of that concern, but I believe it's, I think that having a discussion whether or not something comes to fruition with ACHD, I have no idea. But along with that, along with the concerns that Councilmember Cabinet mentioned, I will also not be supportive of this, this application.
My concerns, for what it's worth, the step up was the same, same principle that I wasn't supportive of. We've given direction not to, not to go that route. We haven't seen the comp plan come before us, what the new proposed one may be and how it might ultimately get adopted. And my questions on the safety really haven't been resolved. The sequence of annexation somewhat dictates what access opportunities we have or don't have. This one is, it is somewhat infill, I agree, but I have that same concern that the way it is being presented isn't the ideal and could be better. And if there was opportunities to come up with something with ACHD prior to an approval, I'd be more... prior to an approval, I'd be more supportive of that, so. It just doesn't appear to be the right time for this right now.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
We're talking about less than nine acres. This property has been eligible for annexation for years. There's four different developments that have surrounded it, that have made it eligible for annexation. I, I mean, for, for less than nine acres, I, I don't know if, if we're looking to have the Taj Mahal built on it. I, I mean, they've had a, a minor adjustment to a variance made to, to be able to make it, according to the road experts, safe road entrance. If, if we're to not do the step-up, we're talking about a few homes removed from this less than nine acre development. So we can essentially condemn the value of the property and force it to wait until the property adjacent to it is annexed as the final surrounding piece, or we can approve this extremely common sense thing that we've approved, literally completely surrounding it as, as R8 developments. I don't understand. It's just really hard to, we have so many people come before us and say, but you just did this. And, yeah, we did, but we might have had a different councilman here that day. Someone might have been missing. I, I, it's just so hard to be consistent when we're just all over the board. We tell people, well, let's wait until the new map comes out. Okay, well, we know what the new map is proposed to look like by the people who know what they're talking about. And now we're saying, well, no, we don't have the map in code yet, so we're going to pretend it still doesn't exist. I, I just don't know what we do here. Let's just vote and move on, I guess.
Well, I think one of our discussions, for what it's worth, I, I don't want to debate you. The exercise of discretion is one of the roles that you have here, so. It's one of the responsibilities. So, any other discussion from counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Roberts.
Mr. President, I could kind of have gone back and forth on this one. I am a little concerned because we had discussed the step-up, but we do have the people that understand and know what is coming forth in the plan. And so I'm okay with doing the step-up, even though we had discussed not, since in the new plan, it will be the higher density. I'm a little concerned about the 4.7 dwelling units. It doesn't sound like much when we're currently looking at three, but with the step-up, it adds, does add 69 to that nine acres. But yet, we really are looking at, in what appears to be an infill project, especially when everything is built out. And we have kind of captured them. Looking at one, 1.9% more than the required open space, but yet, we didn't include a lot in where the pond, where the drainage is and some other things. So I think it would actually add up to more than that. I think this is one of those projects that there's kind of some, some give and take, but I think we've boxed them in a corner. And I think that it does, in the long run, that look like a good project for that space. So I will be supportive of it through lots of reservations.
Any other questions, comments, counsel? Motion is to approve with the conditions of approval presented in the staff report. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Nope.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavan?
No.
Councilmember Borden?
No.
With a tie vote, motion fails.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
Will the mayor be back next week? I move that we continue this item until next Tuesday. Do we have to have it opened to continue it? Mr. President, I move we open the public hearing on item 8B.
Mr. Neri, can you comment to that? If this were to be continued, does the public hearing have to be open to do so?
Mr. President, members of the council, if, since you will likely have, you may have additional discussion, I would suggest you do, not to take public testimony, but to at least have a conversation since the mayor isn't present.
Is a motion. Is a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing on item 8B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is back open.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we continue this item until September 10th for, for the discussion and.
You can't right now.
One second. Yeah, so there's a, there's a motion, not a second yet, to continue it to the 10th. Is there a second?
Second for com-
Second, open for discussion.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mylum.
Well, I feel that maybe we should ask the applicant if we're going to continue this, maybe give her enough time to talk to ACHD, since that has been a concern of many of the councilmen up here. So, if we're going to continue it, we might as well continue it to a date that allows her to get something done in the meantime, if, if that.
I think that's sound advice.
How long would that, how long we think we would need?
You could do it on the 24th or the 17th?
We have to.
Couple of options. Make sure there's ample time.
Right. 17th is only two weeks away.
17th or the 24th?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavan.
I think I'm looking at some of our forthcoming agendas. The 17th is starting to, to fill up. Perhaps the 24th may be more appropriate. And again, we don't know the, the timing of ACHD and staff and all that. I'd rather, I'd, what I would hate is that we come back on the 17th and Ms. Suggs, despite her best efforts, says they can't meet with ACHD till the 18th, and now we've painted ourselves into a corner. So I think the 24th seems more appropriate.
Is that enough time?
Fair point. So the public hearing is still open.
There's a motion on the table.
There's a motion, the maker of the motion wished to amend it to the 24th of September.
Mr. President, yes, to the 24th.
You're the second.
You're the second.
You were.
I was the second. Oh, yes, I was.
Second agreed.
Second agreed.
The revised motion is to continue the public hearing on item H. 2019-0066 to September 24th, with some direction for the applicant, probably in discussions with Mr. McEwen as well, but to meet with ACHD and try and address some of those safety concerns that were raised in the public hearing. The public hearing remains open. We'll continue it again on the 24th, so. Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, just, just a question, maybe clarification for those that are in the audience. There's a gentleman that wished to provide some, some testimony. I just wanted to make sure that he's able to attend on the 24th, or if we want to receive that testimony tonight.
Mr. Neri.
So, Mr. President, you've opened the public hearing, so it's up to you whether you want to have that information tonight in anticipation of the 24th.
Let's do that. You're here, we're here. I think it helps a better decision get made, so.
Hello, my name's Bradley Law. Our address is 4888 West Cherry Lane. We are actually the northwest corner, the property that you're discussing. Something that's been brought up, worrying about the ACHD trying to do the, the turn lane and everything else, it really should be in your notes from the previous meeting, but what he's trying to discuss and talking to ACHD is meant for huge projects where a subdivision takes up a mile square. And that's what they, and this was discussed by, and told to the pre, previous planning and zoning by the staff members. So it's odd that you wouldn't have this information in front of you to look at already. So we just keep beating the same thing over and over and getting the same result, that they are not going to do anything over a 41-house plot. They don't care. It's not big enough. They're not going to do anything about it. So this is a complete and total waste of our time. I have a disabled mother. We're trying to move. This is our life we're talking about. So it, please keep that in mind when you keep moving everything further down the line. That's another month that we don't know what we're doing. So just please keep that in mind.
Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Mylum.
Sir, I would just like to respond to you and, and just make sure that it's clear what is going on. And certainly, nobody is trying to waste your time and your family's time, and we respect that very much. And I agree with you. I don't think anything's going to happen with ACHD. That's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is we're a three and three. We need a tiebreaker. We don't have one. So we're not in a place tonight where we could make a, a decision to approve or deny because we're half and half. If the mayor were here, she could break the tie. On the 24th, there may be one less councilperson, so we might have an odd number. We don't need a tie. And, and the only reason I brought the ACHD back into it is because that might appease some of the, some of the councilmen who said, no, if something could get done, then it might change somebody else's vote, as opposed to just putting it out for a week just to have a tiebreaker, hoping that maybe something else could get done in the meantime as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I apologize. It's just my opinion. I just see it as a huge waste of time and resources.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion from counsel? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
This is on moving it to the 24th.
Councilmember Burton? Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavan?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jane, for your patience. That is the last action item.
Mr. President.
Oh, no, 8C.
I believe we have 8C that we add.
Yes. Do you have that?
So, Mr. President, that is the health trust agreement that's been drafted by the legal department with help from HR. We discussed that in our work session earlier today, but that agreement would need to be approved if that's the direction the council wants to take to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cavan. This is now an action item. We've discussed it at the workshop. Is there a motion on the approval of the trust agreement?
Mr. President.
Palmer.
My reservations initially about the speed at which we were doing this was really slowing me down, but I've come to terms with it because I have a lot of trust in those who are implementing it. And so I'm, I'm, I'm good to go with it. I, I, I agree. I, I've liked the idea of, of having a councilman on there, but there's lots of boards that have liked an idea of having a councilman on. Sometimes I wish we didn't have any councilmen on this board, but here we are, and that's what it is. And I, I think that this is the, the best way to move forward. So with that, I move that we approve the agreement as, as we've got it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the trust agreement as amended on today's agenda. Any discussion? See?
Mr. President.
Seeing none?
So, I do, I, I like where this has gone and, and all of the hard work that's gone into it. I still am, I'm, I do have a little bit of reservation. I would like to see a councilperson on it, though I don't think it should be required. So I am going to support this, and I'm not going to be around for very much longer. And I really hope that the committee will truly look at that possibility of having a councilperson on here and, and not just ignore that once this is approved. If there's a councilperson who wants to serve, I think that they should be able to.
You have the discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavan.
Sorry, I know we want to get out of here. Again, thanks to the staff, but I just have one response to Councilmember Mylum's comment. If, if that is how council feels they want somebody on, this agreement will prevent that from happening. So if that is your intent to have a councilmember on there, you should not support this agreement, and we should have it redrafted so that that intention of council could be fulfilled if that's our desire at a future date.
Mr. President.
Mr. Roberts.
Can I ask for a point of clarification from Mr. Neri? Do we actually appoint the person, or do we approve them to be an applicant to the Department of Insurance?
Mr. President, members of the council, sort of both. I mean, you, you originally did agree those were the, the trustees to start. What I would suggest, so, if there is an issue, I, I don't anticipate, at least in the immediacy, that the current trustees, and I'm not speaking for Christina, she can speak for herself, but we heard that message. We get it. We don't have a clarity with the Department of Insurance. If we get clarity from the Department of Insurance, and there is a desire for a councilmember to serve, and again, my recommendation would be not require a councilmember, but allow one, if that's the desire of the council, to do that, to be a part of it, we can then look at amending the agreement to make that happen. So, rather than not approving it because the agreement doesn't allow it, if we get to the point that it's clear that's a possibility and a desire, and it's not an issue, and there's no conflict, we can create the mechanism to do that. So, you are approving those trustees to be the trustees. If there's an impasse that a future trustee group doesn't wish to listen to the council, you still fund the trust, you still oversee the trust, and you could still terminate the trustees. So, I, I mean, you have the authority over the group. Right now, it was in fashion to have a elected official becau, or at least an elected councilmember, because you also have that authority, and so there would be a conflict. So you can always refashion the agreement. That can be done if needed. We don't have that specific answer from the Department of Insurance today.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Christina, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. So, I would just like to thank you for your support so far on this, but I would also like to remind you that the Department of Insurance has asked us not to write that language in our contract or our agreement. So I'm fearful that if we do put language of that nature in it, it will be denied. That will have a huge impact in the premiums that the employees will be paying next year, as they will see a decrease in premiums with us moving to the self-funded mechanism. So I just wanted to throw that out to you. It is never our intention, and we absolutely will continue the conversations with the Department of Insurance to see if it is possible to have a councilmember on. If that is the case, absolutely, we'd bring it back for amendment so that we did not, in fact, have a conflict in our agreement to that nature.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions on the, or discussion, I guess, for the pending motion to approve? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavan?
No.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Christina. Thank you, Mr. Neri. That is the last action item on the amended agenda. Item 9A is ordinance number 19-1847. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. An ordinance of the City of Meridian, Idaho, amending ordinance number 18-1790, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019, fiscal year 2019, appropriating monies that are to be allocated by the City of Meridian, Idaho, in the sum of negative $10,196,651, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. You've heard this ordinance read by title only. Does anyone wish to hear it in its entirety, Ralph? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Oh, I guess we have to have a motion.
Yeah, that would work.
City Fire Ain. Hey, counsel, how about a motion?
We're starting to take over the ordinances, strike. Mr. President.
Mylum.
Move that we approve ordinance number 19-1847.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-1847 with suspension of rules.
It doesn't say that in there. We need suspension of rules on this one? Usually it says.
If there are, suspend them.
That's in the first reading.
There already are. Or is it the first, what?
A motion on the second. We're okay.
We should in a second. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavan?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Mr. Neri left for two seconds, and we got off the rails.
We needed you, Bill.
Item 9B, ordinance number 19-1849. Mr. Clerk.
An ordinance pursuant to Idaho Code Section 50-1002 and Section 50-1003, providing for a title and findings, providing for the adoption of a budget and the appropriation of $120,525,396 to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Meridian, in accordance with the object and purposes and in certain amounts herein specified for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending on September 30th, 2020, to level all such appropriate taxes and levies as authorized by law upon taxable property, and to collect all authorized revenue to provide for the waiving of the second and third readings pursuant to Idaho Code Section 50-902, and providing for an effective date, and then the filing of a certified copy of this ordinance with the Secretary of State.
Heard this ordinance read by title only. Does anyone wish to hear it in its entirety?
Mr. President.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1849 with suspension of rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 9B. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Item 9C is ordinance number 19-1846A.
An ordinance H 2018-0130, Raspberry Villas, for a rezone of a parcel of land being lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 6 of Raspberry Crossing subdivision, as filed for record and booked, 93 of Platts, at page 11,215 through 11,217, records of Ada County, Idaho, the west 27.00 feet of North Bright Angle Avenue, Road Right-of-Way, and the north half of East Star Drive, Road Right-of-Way, lying in a portion of the northeast one-quarter of Section 31, Township 4 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Rezoning the land used zoning classification from R8 Medium Density Residential and LO Limited Office Zoning District to R15 Medium High Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
We have all heard item 9C read by title only, anyone wish to hear it read in its entirety? Seeing none.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1846A with suspension of rules. Second.
It's been moved to approve, item 9C. Any discussion? All those in, oh, Mr. Clerk, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Thank you, item 9D, ordinance 19-1848. Mr. Clerk.
An ordinance H 2018-0109, Elevate Franklin Storage, for the rezone of a parcel of land known as Lot 1, Block 1 of Umbre subdivision, as filed in Book 101 of Platts, at pages 13,200 through 13,204, records of Ada County, Idaho, and a portion of the southwest one-quarter of the southeast one-quarter of Section 10, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 3.50 acres from LO Limited Office Zoning District to R15 Medium High Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title only, anyone want to hear this one in its entirety?
Mr. President. I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1848 with suspension of rules. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, ordinance 19-1848. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Last but not least, 9E, ordinance 19-1850. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read this by title.
Thank you, Mr. President. An ordinance amending Meridian City Code as codified at Title 11 to modify the variance findings to be consistent with Idaho Code Section 67-6516, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.[1707.34]